Morning, everybody. Christopher Leon Johnson here. So, we're at City Hall. Today is the 27th of August. Beautiful August. And today, there's gonna be a hearing at 10 o'clock. I think it's 9:18 right now. 10 o'clock. Inside that chamber. Council chambers. About Randy Mastrow. So, what's going on in 2024 is there's a lawyer that is named Randy Mastrow, who's a member of the New York State Bar. And they are trying to do whatever they gotta do. The city council wants to interview him because they're trying to prove to the people of New York City, the constituents of New York City, that the city council is the most transparent leg of government ever. I say it's bullshit. And I'll explain to you why. Because what's going on today is these council members don't want this guy to be as the legal counsel for Mayor Adams. So, what's going on with Mayor Adams is that Mayor Adams is under investigation by the feds for his dealing with Turkey, his campaign finance contributions, and finally, his alleged sexual harassment lawsuits that are bought by a woman that he worked with when he was under transit. He was a transit cop. So, let me make that clear. So, going forward today, guys, the city council is full of shit, and they know it. And I'll explain to you why. Because the only reason they doing this is just to give this guy a hard time. They are upset that the people that the Mayor Adams has appointed to be in his administration, they really can't control. And if you understand about this, this city council, this current city council, is that they need people they can control. Even if you point about a mayor's office, they need people they can control. That's the problem. That's the problem. And like I said, how it works in politics is if they can't control you, if they can't control you, then they'll do whatever they gotta do to ruin you. I know that firsthand experience. I know that. Let me make that clear. So, Hello. So, yeah, like I said, it's just a lot of dirty shenanigans that's happening here. So, you see here, over here, you have Housing Works here. And they're not here for a rally. They're not here for... They're probably here for a rally, I don't know. But mostly nonprofits, like Housing Works, and Vocal, and Make the Road, and all these. Like I said, it's gonna be a big hearing today. It's gonna be a lot of people in this hearing. A lot, a lot of people in this hearing. And what's going on is is that because these nonprofits, like Make the... Housing Works right here, and Make the Road, all these organizations, they only care about getting government funding, government funding from these council members. And what happens is it's not these rank and file members that are the problem, because they just hear, they try and... They believe that they're trying to do the right thing. And I get it. And I can't get... No one could ever get mad about that. They're trying to do... They think they're trying to do the right thing for the city. But what goes on is these city council members, what they do is they threaten these nonprofits, like Housing Works, and Vocal, and Make the Road, and these so-called good government organizations, like Reinvent Albany, that get a lot of government funding, is if you don't support, if you don't come out and testify against... Testify against Randy Mastrow, and we know we're gonna block your funding, we're gonna stop standing next to you, we're gonna cancel all your events, we're gonna destroy everything that you have. And that's what they be threatening these nonprofits with. These nonprofits, it's just like, they... Some of them are like, really corrupt. Really, really corrupt. But a number of them that get government funding, they're not corrupt. It's just that when the council members tell them to jump, they gotta jump. They have to jump. It's like people, right? It's like people. And I'm gonna give you the biggest secret of government, right? Nothing's for free. Facts. If... Nothing's for free. What I'm talking about is people think that they getting free support, but they not. If you can't pay with money, you're paying with your ass. What I'm talking about is you're paying with your morals. You're paying with your moral code. So, that means that yeah, these... They'll come out, they'll stand next to you, they'll speak on your behalf, they'll come out to rallies and talk for you, say they... Do their photo op and say what they got to say for you, but in return, it's always a scratch... I scratch your back, he scratches my back situation in politics. Especially in New York City politics. Make that clear. Um... Make that really clear. So... Let's make that really clear. Scratch your back, I scratch my back. Now, there's certain people, like I said, they... Especially people who want... Like, they play this game of like, they'll scratch your back, but when it's time, like, you scratched their back, but when it's time to scratch their back in return, they don't wanna do shit. Those people, you don't fucking work with. And I tell people that in a nutshell, they... You do something for somebody, but when it's time for something in return, they don't wanna do anything, then don't help them out in return. Please, don't. So, make that clear. Now, yeah, so 9:45, everybody's gonna start coming in. Um... I have my press pass, but... What's up, bro? What up, man? Congratulations on the gig, bro.
There's gonna be a line right here. Right behind this gentleman right here.
Yep.
So, 9:45, we're starting letting people in. Nobody, even though you have an email, is gonna get in before that, 'cause they're not ready. Okay?
Yeah, that really, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, 9:45, let everybody in. I mean, that's what it is, like... It's gonna be a lot of people, trust me. Mostly, it's mostly nonprofits speaking against Randy Mastrow. Like I said, they... Like I said, these people here, they're some good people. And I said, I'm not trying to say that they're the people, rank and file members are corrupt. And I will never say that. Don't you... Don't put my words in my mouth. But what goes on is that the people on the top, the leadership, the leadership, they're corrupt. They're really crooked. The leadership is crooked. The executives are crooked. And like I said, they rely on government funding. These council members notice. So, what they do, they use it against them and say, "Look, if you don't... If you... We know that we have a situation, we have a problem here. We have a Randy Mastrow problem. We have a mayor problem in Randy Mastrow. And we know we have no support. And you know what's gonna happen? They have... We have no support. And you know what's gonna happen is we need you come out and testify on behalf of the ma... On behalf of the mayor. On behalf of us, saying that we don't want this guy in." So, like I said, and what happens is they get threatened, saying like, "Look, if you don't do this, if you don't do this, we're gonna fuck you, we're gonna fuck you back. We're gonna fuck you hard." And what I'm talking about is, like I said, they'll block your fund... They'll block your funding. They'll block your... They'll block your funding. They'll prevent you from getting government funding ever again. They'll stop attending your rallies. They'll take your fucking projects. They'll take your fucking... They'll cancel your events. They won't come to your events. They'll do a lot of things to you. They can retaliate a lot of ways. This city council is government, remember. It's still government. Government could do a lot against anybody they don't approve of. So, let's make that clear. Let's make that really, really clear. They will do anything they gotta do against people they don't approve of. And I know that for sure. So, like I said, I know that for sure, man, 'cause some of these members, some of these members, they hate my guts. They hate my guts, but what I say gets seen on Twitter. And what I say, what I do at these rallies, man. And how I cover them. They hate what I do. So, of course, I can name names right now. I'm gonna name names right now, like Submittable Powers. Submittable Rouse hates me. Brandon hates me. Uh, Sandy Nurse hates me. Uh, fucking uh, Crystal Hudson hates my guts. Rita Joseph hates me. Uh, who else hates me, man? Who else hates me in this shit? Uh... What's up, man? What up, bro? What up, what up, man? Who else hates me? Who else hates me in this shit? Uh, fucking, um... Let me name some more names. I think I... Key Powers hates me. A lot of these, a lot of these council members hate my guts. Names, the names, the names are named, but it's a lot of names. But like I said, they have it out for you. Steve Fader, they have it out for you. They'll do what they gotta do to fuck you. They'll do whatever they gotta do to fuck you. They'll do whatever they gotta do to fuck your ass. You understand? Let me make that clear. And you know what happens else? Like I said, these, they say they'll do whatever they gotta do to retaliate. And they can retaliate, they can do what they want. Block your funding. They'll kill your funding. They'll kill your fucking... They'll kill your... They'll kill your funding. They'll kill your funding. They'll take you off the projects. They'll do whatever they gotta do to fuck you in the ass. That's a fact. A lot of dirty shenanigans that's going on. So, I said, these don't... Like I said, you have Housing Works. I think the majority will be Housing Works. Housing Works, the people on top, they really... Like, I think the executive director get paid almost a half million dollars a year, like $400,000... Or $400,000 a year as a nonprofit executive. Come on, $400,000 a year. $400,000. But like I said, we don't know what it's about. They get, these nonprofits gonna come out in the droves and speak against us, man. Speak against us, man. Because it's about getting government funding, guys. All about government funding, guys. All about government funding. All about... I'm speaking on behalf of... I'm speaking in favor of Randy Mastrow, facts. I'm speaking... I'm saying he should get in. It's bullshit. And I'm explaining why a lot of these nonprofits... Like, especially like Housing Works and Vocal is because in 2021... Let me explain what happened in 2021, right? So, 2021, there was a shelter on the west side. There was a big-ass shelter on the west side. Big-ass shelter on the west side. And because of the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, they had to put these guys and gals other places, 'cause they couldn't put these guys in... They couldn't put these guys and gals in certain... They couldn't put these guys and gals at these... At all the shelters that they had to break it up. So, you know what happened? You know, like any shelter, you know that it was a shelter. A lot of these guys mentally ill. They had mental illnesses. They can't be employed. Uh, some of these guys are sex offenders. Some of these guys are pedophiles. They're weirdos. Crazy drug addicts. So, they're gonna make the area around them a fucking... A damn, uh... Make the area around them. Make the area around them. Make the area around them a damn hell. Like, you had guys jerking off. You had guys, uh... There's a lot of people. So, you had guys jerking off. You had guys, uh, fucking harassing children, women. Women with kids. You had guys shooting up, sleeping, stinking up the place, fucking the parks. They were doing a lot of wild, dirty, wild, evil shit. So, you know who complained was? The more like, the more like moderate Democrats and conservative Dems. They start complaining. And then Randy Mastrow, who lives on that same area where the shelter's at, he decided to sue... He decided to sue the shelter, the hotel where they had the shelter at. So, you know what happened was Vocal got mad about that, and Housing Works got mad in Vocal New York. Where they do the advocacy with Housing Works. Vocal New York got upset. Vocal New York got really upset. And they went to that nigga... They went to that man Randy Mastrow's house. Randy Mastrow's house. Randy Mastrow's house. And they did, like, completely threw paint and, like, vandalized his door. They didn't go inside the house. Let me make that clear. I want to... They went outside his house and vandalized his front door. It's in the paper. So, yeah, you have a lot, like I said, so all the... You have the unions, shit like that. It's just... So, this is what's going on. This is what really is happening here. Like, it's a lot of dirty shenanigans that's going on in the city council, guys, like, uh... 9:31. I will... I'm responding to Mona Davis, I will. I will. Alright. Alright. Sorry about that. So, I responded to Mona Davis. She gave me a text, like saying about, like a... Like her... Like Mona Davis' New York Voice newspaper. So, I'd respond to her text. I was talking about that, if I can't hear you. That says, a lot of these nonprofits, they're coming out in droves, um... I'm gonna tell them, "Welcome," but, I mean... Alright, "Thank..." She said, "Thank you." Uh, "Welcome." They're gonna put order reply. Uh, "Welcome." Clear this shit. So, buy Mona Davis' paper, by the way. So, you have Hudson's Chief of Staff. That's that boy. What's up, man? No, it's a line. The line for that Randy Mastrow hearing. Yeah, it's a lot of people. Yeah, it's a long-ass line. That's like, majority of people here, they mostly nonprofits and shit like that. Make this clear. Yeah, a long-ass line, man. Alright, click my screen. Alright, go back, back to where it was. Randy Mastrow hearing. So, yeah, so... So, it's 9:33 now, like, what, 15 minutes, some shit like that. There's gonna be, uh... Let the people win. But, uh, like I said, I gotta... They gonna start to like, probably like 10:30, 11 o'clock, or some shit like that. You know how these people are. Key Powers, unless he, like I said, like... They don't want this guy in. The city council, 'cause they want people... The truth is, like I said before, guys, the city council always want people they can control. And if they can't control you, guys, they will fuck you. They will do whatever they gotta do to fuck you in the ass if they don't... If they don't get to control you. You know how like that word, like a narcissist? Like, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that... Today, I'm not in a, uh... psychologist mood, but you don't worry about it, like narcissist. When a narcissist can't control you, they try to put people against you. They try to tell... They try to spin things, people, they can go against you, so... So, it's a lot of people in this line. That. So, yeah. These nonprofits, they do whatever they gotta do to, uh... appease these elected officials. And if you don't... If you can't appease them, then they will... They will, uh... If they can't appease you, guys, if they can't appease the city... Like, here's how the city council works, right? If the city... If they can't control you, the city, like, if... Like, you government, like, here you get a lot of government funding. You stop carrying that water. You stop carrying that water, they're gonna fuck you next term. Like FY26, or say FY25, FY26 funding, they're not giving you a fucking dime. You're gonna be blocked off, blocked off funding. That's how it works in government, guys. You might get it one year, next year you ain't getting shit. They gonna block you, or... And they'll take you off the projects. So, they say there's like a food giveaway. Your name's on that flyer, though. They'll fucking update the flyer, take you off the flyer. Take your nonprofit off the flyer. And that could fuck you crazy. That will hurt you crazy. So, these nonprofits, like I said, these rank and file members, these rank and files, these rank and files, they say some good people. Um, there's some good people not here. Nobody's gonna be here to disparage them. But... To disparage them, but, uh... So, disparage them, but... But it's the leadership that is crooked. Really corrupt. And they take a lot of government... They really crooked. They only... They drop a power, and they love it like that. So, like I said, um... I think she's, I think she's a cop. I think she's NYPD. Um... Let me see. Yeah, she... Yeah, she's a cop. So, she's a cop, yeah. Executive detail. Well, some of these people, uh, some of these, uh... cops. I think she's one of them. I'm not trying to disparage them. I think she's one of them. But what they, like they do, the mayor's office, 'cause this is how, this is how Phil Banks is... With Phil Banks, what he like to do is, he'll make... He'll get his cops, like, to work and to like, act like they working for the... They do paperwork for the mayor's office. They do paperwork for the mayor. They work... They do paperwork for the, um, mayor's office, shit like that. Or like, members of mayors, they do paperwork, uh, act like they fucking exec... Like, they look like assistants, like her. But they really cops, and they do protection detail. They did protect some deputy mayors and shit like that. And certain operatives in City Hall. That's how Phil Banks does his security detail. That's how Phil Banks run the executive detail NYC. He has some of his members, certain of the members and members service dress and blend in, looking like a, like, looking like a, uh... An executive assistant. Like, they do all the paperwork and all that shit like that. They do all the paperwork and shit like that. Guy in our ear. Or do all the paperwork and shit like that. But they really, security detail. And they trail some of these guys and gals around, and they do protection detail. Because some of these, certain operatives in the city council, city government, New York City, like City Hall, they're so damn crooked, so damn evil, they need protection. They so damn crooked, they need protection. Um... But that's, that's all done by Phil Banks. People gotta start... And one thing people gotta start asking... So, you have Freedom Agenda's here. He's working at, um, Urbana Justice Center. Uh, make that clear. Urbana Justice Center, they here too. So, uh, going back to what I said, like I said, uh... Uh, it's a lot of dirty cronyism that's going on here, like I said. And I'm gonna talk about this right now. Like I said, I'm gonna testify. I'm gonna testify. If I can't do it, I must... I just can't do it now, but what's going on is, uh... What's going on is... What's going on is, uh... What happened to city council, right? What's going on with, like, the city council, right? This is what I hate about this shit sometimes, right? Is I'm here first. I'm not saying I registered first. I would never say that. But I'm here first online. So, most of the time, I'm gonna sign in first. I'm gonna sign in first, right? So, but let me make this clear. I'm a... I'm not part of a nonprofit. I'm not... I'm a regular person with this transaction. I got something I got ten later on today. There's a hearing at 10 o'clock, right? So, the way it works is I'm a regular person. The city council team is a regular person. I'm not a member of these nonprofits, like Housing Works and, um, Freedom Agenda and, uh, Vocal New York. I'm not part of those nonprofits. So, you know what happens to people like me that always that register? Even I register first? I get throttled to the back by the city council. I get throttled to the back. I get throttled all the way to the back. So, I'll be the last to speak at this hearing. The last to speak. They let all the nonprofits speak. They let all the NGO speak. All the nonprofits speak. First. Give him unlimited time. Like, uh, what's his name? Uh, the guy, the bald-headed guy, the blue and red... The blue and red backpack. The blue shirt and the red backpack. What up? What up, bro? Here's show my support. Here's show my support. Here's show my support to Randy Mastrow. So, yeah, uh... So... So, so like I said, it's just a lot of dirty shenanigans that happens, you know, like uh they let all these nonprofits speak, all these executives speak. Unlimited time, unlimited, unlimited time. But the same, but we know what happens after that, unlimited, unlimited time. Unlimited time. Unlimited time. And they get asked all the questions, but but when it's time for me to speak, they give me two minutes, two minutes, two or three minutes, and they weaponize security detail to just kick you out if you go over your time. It's fucking crazy. It's ridiculous, but I'm here to show my support. I don't go fuck what people think. I gotta, I gotta go, cause they gonna, like I was gonna tell you how it's work, right? That's how city council works, right? Once they start a hearing, they're just gonna run their mouths for like thirty minutes, like hour, two hours, and then when they done, an hour or two. An hour or two. And then when they're done, they're going to uh, when they're done, they're going to um have the public testimony. Now, there's gonna be people, like I said, all these nonprofits, like you see here, all the nonprofits, all the nonprofits here, that's online. It's gonna be more people coming inside, probably on the side, it's on the other side too. They're gonna speak in uh opposition to Randy Mastro. They're gonna speak in complete opposition, complete opposition. Complete opposition. Because they have to speak in complete opposition, that's why. But, and they know like, oh, we got opposition, people don't like it. It's some bullshit, guys. See what time it is now. Nine forty-two, three minutes, nine forty-five, three minutes. So like, oh, we against this shit, da-da-da. Take some videos there. So we're, we're going to, oh, we're, we're against this shit, we're against this, and blah, blah, blah. But it's a complete bull crap. We're against blah, 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 and this is complete bullshit, you know what I'm saying? It's just complete bullshit. And this guy's getting done dirty because he lived in the community, he stuck up, he stuck up to the plate, he didn't have to take the case. He didn't have to take the case against a shelter, and he did. And look what happened. He's getting a lot of heat because of it. The city, it's just like, they all getting desperate to act to the, act like to the people, to show the people like, oh, we're, we're the city council, we're transparent and shit like that. There's nothing transparent about the city council. Oh, right, go ahead, so nine forty-five now. So nothing, like I said, guys, I'm headed to the office now, so a lot of people. Uh like I said, people gonna be coming in, it's like that, like I said, it's just a lot of dirty shenanigans that the city council like to do. They'll try to act like they care about the people, but whoever I know, they don't, which is really, really hilarious. So I gotta, take, speaker's coming, that's a speaker's security detail. So make that, that's a security, she go out, she, she cares about the detail, speaker's security, she's coming. She's on her way, so. She have a speaker. Nah, she's gonna make a grand entrance, you know, how she goes, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, got it.
She makes a grand, grand entrance. Thank you, brother, thank you. So, alright. So yeah, we're back, like I said, adding some metal detector stuff, uh they made sure everybody go with the metal detector, cause uh, I'm gonna explain what happened in twenty-two thousand three. Where one year be, it's twenty-one years ago, uh there was a uh council member named James Davis, who unfortunately lost his life on those exact same steps, uh city hall steps, I think inside the, inside the rotunda, uh somewhere around there. And um, you know, it was really traumatic, uh it was really, really traumatic of what goes on here. Uh make this clear, right, and I wanna make this real clear, uh uh people, like I said, I know I can get uh little, real aggressive. I'm a, I gotta sign up, these motherfuckers, they wanna, I can get, I'm gonna go outside, I'm gonna talk to them. Let me go sign in. Uh let me say, I was like, I said, I said, I know I can get real aggressive, but um. Morning, morning, morning. So I know I can get real aggressive, but uh, one thing I don't believe in. I think he's gonna press conference at eleven o'clock. Uh could don't is any violence towards any council members. I don't believe in that shit. Make that clear, so. I'm doing a lazy ride, supposed to take the stairs, but I'm a lazy guy today. Nice elevator. So. Okay, open the door, guys. Stairs, it's just a lot of dirty shenanigans that the city council like to do with uh trying to make sure the people they can't control get screwed over, fucked in the ass, and they say speaker's coming at eleven o'clock, so she's coming at eleven, so. You know what that's about. She's trying to make a grand entrance, grand entrance, and do whatever she gotta do to fucking uh try to cho- show to the working families party and DSA that she want their support. It's fucking crazy. There's a lot of reserved seats here. I gotta sign in. In favor, this is eight twenty-seven. Okay, thank you. So.
Thank you.
No problem.
I don't, I don't know.
Uh huh. So I'm gonna speak in, in favor of this. So yeah, the speakers here, Keith Powers, Hudson, so. And the funny thing about it, where are, oh, sorry, can't be, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not trying to tell you. I think Jumai's coming too, so. Staffer here. There's a lot of reserved seats, holy shit. Can't be in the shot like the speaker. Doing good, man, chilling, chilling. You go, I like going to corner. Sorry about that, brother. So yeah, there's the speakers here, so you know how they, ain't that the speakers here, guys? They are on their best security and like the tech team, they are on their best behavior. This is really rare, like they put the, they going, it's not live, live, but they have the cameras set up. So people can see, it's just like. But it's like, you got all these so-called good government organizations, they're gonna be trying to testify against it, uh we need some transparency, it's just some bullshit, man. It's just some complete bullshit, and they know it, it's just like this guy is um, he's getting done dirty, he's getting done real dirty, yo, like. And they know they, they want, they want people to control, like I said, let's say Douglas Powell was a, who Vocal New York was supposed to be appointed by the mayor, they, they wouldn't have this hearing. You know why? Because they control him. They need people to control, guys. They need people to control. They, I was gonna say, how the city council work is they can't control you, they will fucking, they will try to rule you. They will rule you and R B. I think Randy gonna have his legal counsel, I don't know, he might have his legal, I don't think he gonna be there alone like that. But he, he's a beast, so I mean, he, it's like, I believe he's, he's gonna be doing good today. I said, this city council, this city council, they all do what every guy do to make sure this guy don't get in. I spoke to people this morning, they're like, oh, yeah, like, they, they might, yeah, they might let him, you never know. I, I say they might not, they might let him in, this might be for W, for W E bullshit. W W E purposes, shit like W E purposes and for show, but you never know, they might be real because Adrian Adams, who the speaker is, is trying to run against James Sanders for state, um state senate in twenty-twenty-six. She's a career politician. She loves the gravy train, she loves the gravy train, she loves the, the gravy train. So what you expect is gonna, she loves that gravy train. So let me make that clear, let me go downstairs, this is bullshit, let me see, why these, why these nonprofits down downstairs, man, this is crazy. One second, I'm going out, be back, yo. Hi, man, screen please, thank you. They have a rally out there, or what? They have a rally outside? Where the, I don't know, where's the, how's, I saw them, how's work, folks and shit. What up, bro? But uh, security right there. So yeah, they're gonna rally at ten, trying to talk against this, I can't say, yo, they will kick you out of city hall, like, I, I know how that shit do. But uh, so they were rally at ten o'clock. Yeah, they will kick you out of city hall, like, I'm not trying to kick you out of city hall, for what? I got things to do. Yeah, like, fuck, like, I know outside the gate, you could, they will, they will, they can't kick you out of the park, but they will kick you out of city hall. What up, man? What up, Raul? Hey, Y C drop us a mic, what up? Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I got you. Yeah, 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 I saw a car, yeah. Oh, Fester's here, huh? Uh huh. Who?
I'm gonna yell Donald Trump.
Fester's here, so. Fester's here. It's a rally, they have a rally today at six o'clock. Yeah, I'm, I got. Yeah, but I know they are, they're crooked, but it's a rally at six o'clock they have, I know you could, cause Yan is gonna be there, so Yan is coming, so. I, I, I'm gonna be naked, let you give me five dollars. Oh, trust me, I, I, yeah. I don't know who he is, I don't know. So that they, I think they have a rally talking against this fucking guy, the rally talking against this guy, shit. Yeah, do what you gotta do, man. Do what you gotta do, do what you gotta do. Yeah, I think the speaker, I think the speaker's gonna speak. The speaker's coming, yeah, the speaker. Speaker Adams.
Adrian Adams?
Yeah.
She already went inside.
I think she'll probably come out, I don't know.
She went inside.
Oh.
Oh, you, oh, you mean they're gonna have a press conference?
They might have a press conference, because all the nonprofits here. Freedom Agenda's here, Vocal's here, House Workers here.
Wait for this, for it to start, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to start.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but the hearing don't start till ten, no?
Yeah, it starts at ten o'clock, but they, they just, they, they, you know how they do, they grand entrance and shit like that, and that's how they do, they grand entrance.
A quick, a quick press conference?
And then they go inside, and they tell you where to fuck him out, yeah.
I know that we're gonna have a press conference, I was sitting there waiting.
Yeah. I have my shirt.
I wanna see with that shirt again, alright, ever again.
Yeah, 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 I'm gonna burn it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm wearing a shirt, cause it's a rally they have, beginners, but I have a rally at six o'clock. Yeah, so I'm not wearing that on purpose, bro.
Joshi might come out. Joshi comes in, I'll get out.
Yeah. I think that's.
He's gonna put on notice.
Uh huh.
I wanna yell his name from the steps.
Mm-hmm. What's up, Fester? Fester, you will never be controller. You will never be controller, Fester. You will never be controller, Fester. Fester, you will never be controller. Fester, you will never be controller. Fester, you will never be controller. You are crooked, Fester. Fester, you are crook. Fester, you're crooked, you fat piece of shit. You are crooked, Fester. You will never be controller, Fester. Yeah, it's alright, it's alright. Yeah. So, I know, it's alright. I'm my personal capacity, so they can't say shit. Yeah, 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 I know, it's alright, it's alright. Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's not a domino, no, no, no. Yeah. So I just made my shit clear about Fester, he will never be controller. What's up, man? So. Natasha Williams, son. Ricky Palladino. What's up, man? So. Yeah. It's gonna be a lot of people, all these, they, they speaking first, and shit like that.
I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read the, I'm gonna read that, that definition of cronyism.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'm gonna yell Donald Trump.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you could sign in, I mean, they gonna, they, they go, I told people this morning, where they, where they do this stuff here is uh, they let all the nonprofits speak, and then they let regular people speak last, so I don't.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a long time, like hours before you get to speak, right?
Mm-hmm. Let all these nonprofits speak first. And after that, they good. They ain't shit to me. Yeah.
Give me some of the names of the nonprofits, what's their name?
House Works, Freedom Agenda, Vocal New York.
Vocal New York?
Vocal New York, vocal, vocal New York, yeah. Hmm? Yeah. So yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of people, like I said, just a lot of dirty shenanigans that's going on today. You have Shake Off Christian here. Yo, Jumai's coming. I know, former governor, huh? No, no, former governor. Yeah, oh, Jumai's here. Jumai's here. Jumai, yo, Jumai's here, man.
Hey, that one, that's our biggest challenge. That's our biggest challenge, but we're gonna make you a Trumper. Cause you're supposed to be for all the people, Jumai, all the people, including Trump. All the people, alright? We're okay with truth and love, brother. No hate. No hate, brother. Trump, twenty twenty-four. Trump, twenty twenty-four. We say no to the nonprofits, the lobbyists, that's what we say. You know that's the truth. Go to the lobbyists. He's an idiot. Harris is an idiot. That's what he's gonna do, he's gonna take back New York. Take back New York from the woke, that's why. That's what he's gonna do. He's not gonna bullshit me, I'm a native New Yorker, fifty-four years old, I've been here. I'm not woke. Yeah, look at, yeah, get, get him, get, get him, go ahead, get ghetto for the camera, go ahead. Show him your ghetto-ness, go ahead. Act out. Act out. Do your ghetto-ness, go ahead. Careful, I might hurt your feelings. I might hurt your feelings, you might start crying. Trump, twenty twenty-four. Trump, twenty twenty-four, that's what we say. It's getting closer.
Take Q As, man.
You're here with House Works, good.
That's what I wanna know, that's the big question.
The executive order get paid.
How much you donating? How much money? You can call it donations, but it's still money. It's money you giving up. The yayo, you giving up the yayo, and you laugh about it. They brainwash you, you can't even think for yourself. Think for yourself. Joe. If you, if you had half a brain, if you had half a brain, you would know the amount of what's going on, what's going on, you would know that. Alright, I'll tell you what. So how many stop that, you know anything about that? You don't know about that, right? You know about the bullshit press conference they had? You know about that press conference? You know who Brian Mokene is? You don't know.
So they taking their little photo op.
Photo op.
They should get in the back, they should get in the back of it. So they take a little photo op back, it's like.
I don't wanna get blamed, I don't wanna get blamed.
Like, these nonprofits, they know what they're doing, man. They getting paid by the speaker.
Show them the yayo, guys, show them.
They getting paid up by the speaker to go against his bill. They know.
How much you gave up, come on. You guys are gonna speak first. That's how you get to speak first. You give money. Then the chair puts you right up front, so you can testify, and they give you extra time.
Alexa, oh, Alexa Villas here. Alexa's here, Alexa's coming. Alexa Villas, oh shit, so.
I'm already a lost wolf for worse with this lady, see this?
Yeah, I mean.
This is a big seller, right? The Sherman Foundation. The nonprofits.
Yeah.
Hands off.
So they, like, these, they are just upset that they can't control people. Yeah, the city council don't like them, but.
Trump, twenty twenty-four, remember that. Keep that in mind. Careful, your feelings might get hurt today. That's the crazy part, they gotta come through.
Mm-hmm.
Where the hell, council member? Guys, guys, arrest this person right here, come here. Arrest him, right here. For cronyism. I'm gonna arrest him, dude, over the charges, we charge you with cronyism. You are guilty of cronyism, and we have to prove, the Sherman Foundation's. Good morning, New York City! Good morning, Buenos dias!
Alright, so uh.
We charge a council member with cronyism, and many of the council members, more than fifteen of them. Let me uh, let me see if I can find that. I know I got it here.
So they all showing up at the roads. What's up, Marte? Nice bag, bro. Nice bag, African bag, man. African bag, man, like Chris Marte was an African bag, man, that's, that's rare, usually has some other type of. No more twenty-four bag, but he have an African bag. Alright. Oh, the mayor's here. Adams here. Adams.
Good morning, New York City. Today's August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. My name is Raul Rivera, I'm a native New Yorker. I love my city. I love this city, and we do what we do because we do love our city. Because we don't believe in, in, in the stuff that's happening here, the wokeness, the discrimination, the, the gaslighting from our council members. Our council members, well, let's put it to you this way, this city council is full of blacks, Puerto Ricans, Dominicans, these are our own people screwing us. We have some Asians in there, it's our own people screwing us. We have bills that we'll get passed because it's our own people who blocking us. It's not Donald Trump, it's not the white man. So we wanna share uh, uh. So we wanna share, uh, a, a little definition here on cronyism. And there is a way to pass a bill here. You create a nonprofit, you donate money, and that's how you pass your bill. Also, when you, you, you create a nonprofit, they let you speak first. And when they let you speak first, they give you additional time. Somebody like me, who can't give money, who doesn't have a nonprofit, we only get two minutes and then we get cut off. Especially if they don't like what you're saying. So we're gonna share this little quote on cronyism. "Cronyism is a specific form of in-group favoritism that spoils system practice of partiality in awarding jobs and other advantages to friends or trusted colleagues, especially in politics and between politicians and supportive organizations, AKA, nonprofits." Thank you so much. We ask New York to wake up, and we ask you to vote for Trump, twenty twenty-four. Trump, twenty twenty-four! Trump, twenty twenty-four!
Alright, so let's go inside, I'm gonna go inside, miss. So. Yeah. So, Carmela Rosa, her staff, she taking.
Trump, twenty twenty-four, Delarosa!
There's a lot of people in there, should be. No, I, I don't know, I'm gonna go inside. I don't know, I don't know what's. They went through the, the mayor's here. Hurry up. Yo, mayor's here. What's up, man? Coming out.
Trump, twenty twenty-four. Trump, twenty twenty-four.
No days off.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
No days off.
Let me guess, let me guess, a lot of people inside there? Oh. Yeah, it's a lot of people here. Mm-hmm. Oh, man, it's a lot of people in here, man.
Sir?
Yeah.
You have to take a seat if you want to walk around.
No problem, I'm gonna go upstairs, there's a lot of people here. I think that's Randy, right? That's Randy Mastrow? Me. Let me go up. I'm going up. Laugh. What happened?
You got it, man?
Huh?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand in there, starting. I got my yellow Trump twenty twenty-four. I got you, then I'm gonna, they're gonna kick you.
Yeah. Thank you. Hello, hello. What? What? Alright, I'm gonna sit. I don't know. I don't wanna give you a hard time, but I'm gonna sit here. No problem. He's an asshole, he's mad like. Meat, he's mad like, yo, uh. Like. There's Randy Mastrow right here. Let me shake, let me shake his hand. Let me shake his hand. Mr. Mastrow, let me shake his hand. Good luck, brother, good luck. Thank you for your, let me take, take a selfie? Take a selfie? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm gonna sit down, I gotta sit down, they're gonna, they want ass. Let me, what happened? I'm gonna sit down, I gotta. Let me find someone to. Alright, go. Let me sit in the third row. You wanna sit in the third row? I'm gonna sit. I'm gonna sit in the third row. Wait, wait. But wait it. Come on, come on, let's go, let's go. Let me sit, let me sit right there, let me sit right there, yo. Raul, come on. Let me sit right there, you're gonna. He didn't know where.
Where can we sit?
Uh. I'm gonna sit right here. I'm gonna sit next between these. Sorry about that. You sit right there, bro. Sorry.
Morning.
Morning, how you doing, sorry about.
What brings you here?
I'm here to support Randy Mastrow.
Cool?
Yeah.
What's your connection to him?
Nah, to support, cuz he, he focused at Shelter twenty twenty-one.
Cool?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good to meet you, I'm Jessica.
My name is Christopher.
Hi.
Yeah, hello.
Hello!
So he gives a hard, like. So I'm wearing my trans-all shirt, by the way, you know. I saw it on Twitter. Twitter, social media, everything like that.
Wow, that's interesting.
Mm-hmm. Actually follow this stuff, so. How about you?
Um, I work with Randy.
Oh, that's good.
He's my, my, like, mentor at work.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Funny, they let all these nonprofits speak first. That's probably against them, they let real people last. Bullshit. Chiose here. They have all these nonprofits that could go with funding here. This is ridiculous. They gonna speak against them cuz these members, they threaten these nonprofits, like, we don't speak on what we wanna push, we'll cut your funding. So this is a lot of BS that's happening. Have a lot of people supporting this, man. But the problem is, they let all these nonprofits speak, all these NGO speak. But when it's time for real people to see, they all leaving. Well, it goes mad, you gotta get your, get your point out. So a reserve for all the nonprofit leaders, this is ridiculous. All the nonprofit leaders and council staffers. Fester right here. Fester right here.
Oh, hey, Mark, how's it for you? Hey, Jay, I came over to say hi to you. How are you?
I didn't even see you.
How are you?
I would've run over to see you if I saw you. You're very different.
Oh, I was right next, I was right next to him. I didn't even look down.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, how are you? I mean, we haven't showed it. Twenty minutes later, we did.
Mm-hmm. Twenty minutes late.
No, I know. How are you liking the new job at the office?
Those mayors are, ugh.
I mean, like, I'm so spoiled there. I do such interesting things, but.
All these nonprofits here, like. So they gave, they give Darren Mack a reserved seat in the front, they give, um, the other cat from, uh, Met Council for housing. They know what they're doing, all these nonprofits get to speak first, that are gonna be opposing this guy, they get a limited time. But the people that's gonna be against it, supporting him, they gonna get like two minutes, three minutes to speak. And they wanna cut you off at two, three minutes, like, we don't wanna hear what you gotta say. Really, really crony, crony shit going on. Looks like it's more supporters.
Speaker's here. Speaker's here.
Trump, twenty twenty-four! Trump, twenty twenty-four! Trump 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 twenty twenty-four! Look at him on the straight face, man!
Ah, yeah. What you gotta say? What you gotta say?
I couldn't. I didn't wanna fight with the officer because I have a bad back. And he wasn't here for that anyway. He did his job. We respect that. We did what we have to do. Trump twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four, Trump. Dude, I'm a native New Yorker. That's what they do here. They kick your ass.
Okay. Okay. Let me go. Got Trump on anyway.
There are many experienced and effective lawyers in our great city. But any prospective corporation counsel must meet the high standard of commitment to public service and justice. They also need New Yorkers' trust and must be accountable to the public and the many officials represented by the law department. They must be able to confidently lead the more than eight hundred attorneys and support staff of the law department. They must faithfully represent all of us, the entire city, the council, agencies, and other elected officials. The reason that our city charter was revised to require this position to receive advice and consent came from the need to ensure corporation coun...